Could that be?
All right.
No, it's just.
Thirty more seconds. And we're here, all right. Called the order to declare a quorum for the Economic Development Authority meeting on November 25th at 4:00 PM. Discussion on economic authority funds, including revenue and expenditures. So I asked Pam to do this and, you know, Judy, thank you again for making this suggestion and putting that money into something. And you guys have basically revenues, but Pam told me and I sent it around eighty-one thousand total since we put money into that fund, which is fantastic to give us additional revenue that came specifically from the investment. So that was really good that we started doing that. So want to give credit where credit is due on that. So any questions on that item? Curiosities or anything?
No, but I think we need to do it with more funds than just that. I have an emergency fund too that's just sitting there.
I will say you, the audit for 2022, I don't have the 23 scan, do I? Ah, there it is. I wanted to just read off the fund balances at the end of the year from when we got the influx of revenue. Alright, so we, for 2023, we brought in forty-seven one eighty-five, spent seventy-five five twelve for a net reduction of twenty-eight thousand three twenty-seven, which brought the fund balance down to one million seven forty-six and fifty dollars. Just for context, the influx of money was in 2011, which was a influx of two million fifty-seven thousand one forty-two. So we brought in a little over two million dollars and over that thirteen-year period, we've kind of nickel, chipped away and chipped away and have let it down by just over three hundred thousand. Net reduction in it now, as the mayor said, that's with several years of about twenty to twenty-five grand coming in, you know, a piece of the hotel tax revenue. Now there's some additional revenue in the form of the investment income, which of course, as you spend the money, your investment portfolio will get reduced, which will mean the overall investment income will go down, which isn't necessarily a bad thing. I mean, you've got the money there. It's kind of a unique situation, which Jeff, I'm sure you probably have heard this, but it's the money is from the Brown versus Warriors case. That's why we have that pot of money there is that stripped security that the Supreme Court blessed. But I just wanted that for context that over about a, you know, twelve-year period, it's gone down by about three hundred grand. And there hasn't really been a, you know, comprehensive decision made as to what are we going to do with that money? What's that money there for? So.
Yep. Actually, I met the attorney that did all that, Bruce or Bryce or something like that?
Bryce?
Yeah.
You met him?
I did meet him.
Was he fun?
He's nice.
Was he fun?
I mean, I wasn't in a situation where I did not see him being nice.
He didn't get the full Bryce experience then?
Sometimes you get to walk into the right courtroom to see that.
The thin line between crazy and genius.
My attorney's a really nice guy, don't you get him?
He plays jumper up with it.
All right, so item number three, discussion on authority establishing the investment, an investment package or packages to recruit businesses to our city. So I asked everybody to kind of have some thoughts because this allows us to have some open forum, open conversation about what you guys would like to see happen with these funds and some ideas because we need to do something instead of just not doing anything. So that is why we are here. So as you feel led to do that. But if Mr. Saban, if you'll come up and just kind of share a little bit about what options are and introduce yourself and why you're here.
I'm Jeff Saban, I'm with the Center for Economic Development Law. We've been your TIF counsel basically since twenty eighteen and helped to come up with your existing TIF project plan and help put together a TIF and sales tax incentive policy. I'm going to be handing out two handouts here. These are simple one-page summaries of the existing incentive policy that we adopted shortly after we, the council back in twenty eighteen adopted the project plan that included the TIF districts. So the project plan itself created four technical districts. There's two of them have been activated. There's the one that covers the retail area down by Super Macado Morales, down at Thirty-Ninth. And then there's one in the, what would be the downtown area around Fiftieth and MacArthur. There's one up further at Sixty-Third, I believe, some of the undeveloped parcels around the Walmart neighborhood market up there. And then there's one on the feeder road just south of Northwest Expressway. That's a vacant site kind of backed up in the neighborhood. Those later two have not been activated yet. But TIF gives you a tool to do public infrastructure improvements and provide some financing assistance based on development that could happen within those geographies. So TIF works is when you enact a TIF district or the two that haven't been created, when you actually do a subsequent action to create those, the county assessor will go and they'll determine what the valuation is of the property within that TIF district when you create it. And then as you make projects happen within that area and the valuation increases, the taxes, the tax rate applied to that increased value is captured separately and deposited into an apportionment fund that you all can use to pay the project costs that are listed in that project plan. And that project plan includes a budget of... Apologies. So it has an eight million dollar budget, which includes two million dollars for public improvements. So that can be any kind of infrastructure need that you guys think a project might need to happen. And up to five million dollars in what's called assistance and development financing. And that's basically private development incentives for projects that you guys think is our worthwhile public investments. That money, just like any public revenues, that's either allocated for economic development or things of that nature. You know, the, it's been a long-held principle in state law in Oklahoma that economic development is a valid expenditure of tax revenues. And so really, you know, as projects come into play, you just need to kind of examine what's being proposed and come up with some kind of criteria of things that you guys think would be worthwhile public investments and then do a project-by-project analysis of the benefits and things that you might need either to secure people locating here or things that you guys think would be a good draw. And it's pretty wide open, to be honest. And it doesn't even have to be like a good necessarily, you know, quantitative investment. If they are qualitative projects that you think would make the city a nicer place to live, that could also be some valid economic development. But we always recommend at our firm, you just need to have a plan in place and you need to quantify or qualify the types of projects that you're looking to incentivize and then come up with some kind of an implementation plan to get those there. The two handouts I just handed out kind of go over what's in your current TIF and sales tax incentive policy. And this doesn't go into a whole lot of detail about the kinds of projects. It provides some broad eligibility criteria that the council considered back in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. And it establishes three different kinds of incentive programs that you can kind of market towards prospective, you know, new developers or retailers or some of your existing businesses. The first is development project assistance. And that's where there's going to be basically a new project or substantially new higher-level investment that's kind of on par with there being a new project. So at the time, council kind of set like a minimum two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar investment level because really, once you get below that, these kinds of projects that would be funded in a TIF district, it won't generate a whole lot of new ad valorem revenue without that kind of investment or upwards. Usually, probably want upwards. But basically, minimum two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar investment, you know, adopts or follows the city's, you know, zoning and design standards and review, be willing to commit for a long term. And then based on how much their proposed construction cost is for their project, you can provide them, you know, a certain percentage of that construction cost cap based on how much ad valorem TIF revenues that project might generate over time. It's kind of similar to what you did with the forty-six fourteen North MacArthur building project conversion into a mixed-use project. That was funded with some upfront loans from the Economic Development Fund.
Yeah.
But it was intended that over time, that revenue generated by that increased investment would repay the, that fund from TIF revenues.
Right, and I actually have, I saw that on here and it reminded me. So we did twenty-five thousand after you had certain milestones. And then the other twenty-five thousand is going to come out of the increased value of the property. And the base, just easy numbers, was about six thousand beforehand. Now it's going to be around twenty-one thousand in tax revenue. And then we get that difference as the city.
And based on when that project was completed and the new value entered the tax rolls, the city should see the first increment from that project this coming summer. So after this current tax year's taxes are paid and this county treasurer processes everything, it should be probably May or June, the city should get a check for that.
Yep.
And that'll go into the apportionment fund for the TIF district to be used on project costs, so.
Right.
The second category of assistance, retail recruitment. And so none of the, none of the TIF districts in the project plan are sales tax TIF districts, mostly because you don't need them to be here in the state, which means that... So the Economic Development Authority is the entity in the project plan and in the ordinance that adopted the project plan. The increment revenues are the EDA's funds. So they are special funds of the EDA. So any agreement for TIF revenues or TIF assistance would have to go through the EDA. Sales tax incentives for retail projects, since that's not increment revenue, it's still the city that controls those funds. So an incentive agreement that involves some kind of sales tax reimbursement or partial sales tax reimbursement or things of that nature will need to be directly with the city council or with the city directly through the city council. And would be subject to annual appropriation to fall within constitutional fiscal year guidelines. So for eligibility for the retail recruitment assistance, the big eligibility criteria here is that, you know, it's, the majority of operations would provide sales goods, with sales of goods or services subject to municipal sales tax. You want it to be open full-time, obviously, but then the big number is, these are designed for larger-scale projects. So they wanted the retail businesses to have a projected annual sales number of one million dollars or more. And then there's some additional review criteria that may come into play in terms of determining how much of a reimbursement you all think would be merited, such as, is there a need for this particular business or project in the city? Are they going to be creating a lot of jobs or very few jobs? How much capital, what's their capital investment requirements, things like that? All things that should be really considered with every economic development project you look at. Funding, whether that's through TIF, sales tax reimbursement, or spending money that you have in your economic development fund. But really, we have kind of comparable to the percentage caps over a period of time. So the retail recruitment assistance, anticipated average term of assistance would be a five-year reimbursement of a certain percentage of the general fund's sales tax. And that's, would increase based on the projected annual sales. Argument being that higher annual sales might be worth it to attract them here with a long-term commitment that on the backend, you guys can more than make up the amount of money you'd be reimbursing. The third category of assistance is small business enhancements. And this is really is a way to incentivize your current businesses to spruce up their, their operations a little bit. They're designed to provide kind of on the backend, a backend grant to cover some of their costs, up to a certain amount, up to fifteen hundred dollars. And that could be, you know, new signage, anything that would help improve their operations and increase their profitability because that means that, you know, if they are doing better, the city's getting more sales tax revenue.
The maximum is fifteen hundred?
That would be the maximum amount of the grant that the city would provide.
Okay.
Back to them. So if you have a little mom-and-pop shop at one of the shops, at one of the shopping centers that, you know, Fiftieth and MacArthur comes in and say, you know, I want to, you know, redo the facade, you know, even if it's like a new sign that meets code or something like that. They could spend potentially, you know, three thousand dollars, four thousand dollars for a new sign or a new facade or a new door, whatever, that helps make their business look more attractive for the outside to attract more people. They submit the paperwork and the application for that project and the city can reimburse, you know, up to fifty percent of what they actually expended on those small business enhancements, up to fifteen hundred dollars.
That's what I presented last city council, but I didn't know there was a limit at fifteen hundred.
And, you know, there's a policy as a guide. The Economic Development Authority or the city council can waive or change those requirements as you all see fit. This is just something to kind of give, you know, developers in your, in your business residence, something that they know that like, alright, these are available to us. You know, these are things that you can market in terms of your plans to try to draw more economic development projects into your city, things like that. But, you know, every project is different. Every project's going to have different needs. Some might have a higher need, some might have higher benefits that justify a higher level of incentive than what's listed here. It's really just a case-by-case analysis. So any, any of the policies for incentives, we kind of set up in the incentive policy itself, a simple procedure. And we set up three different applications for the different varieties of assistance. We also have the ability, a project can request a different form of assistance for you all to consider. And so the initial step, when an application comes into the mayor's office, is that they'll distribute it to certain department heads and they'll review it and they'll likely send a copy to me or Matt. And we'll take an initial look at it and see if it meets the general eligibility criteria in the policy. And then we'll arrange a meeting of what's called the Incentive Review Committee. And that's made up of... So the mayor chairs it, there'd be two representatives of the city council, the chair and vice-chair of the planning commission, and one representative of the public at large. So they meet and they'll review the incentive requests and the recommendations of staff and come up with, and they'll likely listen to basically a pitch from the developer or the applicant. And they'll come up with a recommendation for a level of assistance to be provided. And then I'll, I'll take that recommendation and help draft a term sheet and agreement to bring in discuss in front of either you all as the Economic Development Authority or the city council, depending on what the kind of assistance being requested is. And then at that point, it's discussed at an EDA or a city council meeting and potentially approved, disapproved, altered, as you guys see fit at that point. That's the long and short of what you have currently. And again, Matt's very right, like, it's very rare to have such a large pot of money just sitting there available for economic development purposes. Usually, communities I work with across the state are trying to figure out ways to get money, to get a project here. And you guys have, you know, a million and a half plus dollars available to you all for that purpose, just sitting there. Again, whether a particular project or not you find to be desirable or the kind of project you think marriage assistance is a policy question that you guys need to, you know, figure out as you can. And I'm available to help you guys come up with either refinements to your existing policy or additional policy requirements or review specific proposals that you guys see fit. But really, you know, that money is there and as long as there's, you know, good consideration for you providing it to a project, you should be pretty well-covered legally in terms of it being a legitimate public expense. Anything else to add, Matt, or?
You mentioned businesses that might want some other form of assistance other than what's in the policy. Can you give some ideas, since this is what you do, of what kinds of assistance outside of sales tax reimbursement or grant to do?
So, yeah, with the, so the kind of the assistance listed in the policy is really kind of intended as a pay-as-you-go kind of assistance. Again, you know, paid back over time with ad valorem revenues as they come in through the TIF district or sales tax revenues as they're generated at the project. The alternative forms of assistance are for projects that are running into upfront funding problems. They can't get adequate financing, even with a potential, you know, contract for future revenues going out and privately financing it. They're just running out of luck and there's a financing gap to get it done. That's when, you know, your economic development fund can come into play, either as a grant provided on the backend after they meet certain eligibility criteria, or potentially you can frame it as like a forgivable or an unforgivable loan. You know, you can set up either a revolving loan program to where once it's paid back, you know, with a moderate interest rate that might be underneath, but they might be able to get on the private market. You can reinvest those funds back into the Economic Development Fund to use over again. Just things of that nature, but usually it would be the form of some kind of upfront financing, either through a loan or a grant. And that's where you guys are at a, a pretty large strategic advantage compared to a lot of your peers. Because, like I said, most communities, the budget's pretty thin. They don't have a lot of money laying around for, you know, infrastructure projects or things like that for economic development projects that you guys do. So they usually have to just go lobby the state or the feds, which I'm sure you guys could do as well. But this gives you an extra, extra lending, extra leverage. Or if a project is big enough to where it might need, you know, a massive subsidy from the feds, this gives you some money you could tap into as well for like managing shares, things of that nature.
Very cool. When Mr. Saban's here, you know, go ahead.
I'd like to ask a specific question as it relates to that Golden Corral building.
That's always here.
Would that building be in one of the TIF districts if we activated the one at the north end?
It is, it is outside of the TIF district.
It's right behind it. It's, it's the empty field where the TIF actually is.
I mean, if, if it's worth it, you can add area to existing TIF districts. It just has to go back through the full statutory process, which would include a formal resolution from the city council declaring an intent to consider a major amendment. And then you have to go back through the review committee, which is, you know, representatives of all the ad valorem taxing entities. So, you know, the school district, the career tech, all those people would have to meet to go over what the actual amendment would be. And in this case, the amendment would just be adding area and probably adding some budget. And then, so once the review committee would recommend, then it'd have to go to your planning commission for a recommendation and then go through two public hearings. But you could do that if it was, if it was worth it. If there are ways around it, I mean, it's going to depend on the project, whether you guys think it's worth that process or not.
Well, it's a, it's a blighted area right now.
Yeah, it, it fits the definition of TIF better than the acreage does.
It does.
Should have built the hotel back farther.
Or up in front.
Yeah.
Take up both places.
Should have had TIF district before the hotel was built.
I'm saying, see, it's while we're here, for the future plans of things.
Can we do anything with the nine acres that would be motivating, like, maybe easier than scrapping that one building? If anybody wants to come and build on the nine acres?
The, you're talking about the acreage that's behind the hotel? I've, I've put that out multiple times and storage units are the best option.
Oh.
Or housing.
As I say, you've got that little section of housing there that nothing's been built.
Yeah.
Infrastructure's all there, but nothing's been built, so obviously the domain is down.
Well, and there's lawsuits engaged with that, so it's just a whole mess over there.
Oh goodness.
You know, some projects might even merit their own separate TIF project plan. If you want, if you had a project specific, like if a major employer wanted to come to town or something like that, so you don't have to keep track of it with all the other TIF districts, you can have one that's separate specifically for that project.
Yeah.
I don't know if, whatever's planned on the Golden Corral sites, whether that or not, but, you know, if it, if it were, that's an option as well. I mean, you have limited local, I mean, purely local economic development tools available to you, but TIF is probably your biggest one. That's fully within your control.
Yeah, we're three minutes too close for lock supply to put one of their big stores there.
What can we do legally to help Pizza Ranch come in? I mean, it's not...
So that's, so that's a question, so, you know, we have to kind of, because it's not on the agenda necessarily, but... So one of the questions I was going to ask was, can we do a multitude of things to kind of help? Because I know whenever they were here, they kind of asked, could we do some things in kind? Which is actually a function of the city council, not EDA. So waiving some fees, you know, I don't know that it's going to cost twenty thousand dollars for fees to do the remodel on that building. They're asking, hey, can you do something like that? Is there a possibility of having some capital with milestones on it, like what we did for Josephine's? And then also doing a tax rebate like we did for, you know, the grocery store.
All of those are legal avenues available to you all.
Because I think a good combination of all three, I think, could be a healthy thing to do personally.
What, what did we do for the grocery store? I don't remember that.
Three years or, three years or a million dollars, whichever came first. And they're up next year.
They're fifty percent reimbursement?
Yes. Yeah, they're not close. They'll be about a quarter of the way there.
Well, that's one of the reasons for the upper...
Their projections were way off or we wouldn't have given that much.
I have a question.
And usually we do get taken, so that's what we've got to...
Thought they were going to close the old Morello's too.
That they said...
They were supposed to.
That's what we were told.
That would have helped. Anyway.
All they did was, all they did was eat each other's stores profits by keeping both open.
Right.
Right.
That's their fault, that's bad business.
Well.
One of the benefits of a pay-as-you-go type structure as well is that, you know, if they don't meet their projections, they're getting less revenue back. So it kind of self-corrects itself, yeah.
Jeff, one thing that came up at the city council meeting, I'd like you to address. When you've got somebody looking, looking for an incentive that's wanting to move in, they've got a business model that might be in competition with local businesses in that area, how does that factor into the evaluation by your city or EDA?
So that, that comes into play when you analyze the benefits of that project. You want to look at how much it might cannibalize your existing businesses and take that into consideration in your incentive structure.
You mean these existing businesses? Yeah, yeah, we, I was talking about somebody with that today, about that.
I'm new here, so I'm going to ask you some questions that might sound weird because I'm not...
There are no weird questions.
Yeah.
There are no dumb questions.
I'm not going to say dumb. Can the city use the money, certain amount of the money, to host, for example, an event that will bring sales taxes? Farmer's market? Food trucks every Saturday and Sunday in certain areas in the city that this city would...
No, I'm saying, we, we did that with the, a couple of festivals, but they didn't pay their sales tax like they were supposed to.
They don't come in and buy their permits.
They didn't buy their permits, they didn't pay their sales tax.
This, this, this time, for example, farmer's market, you have to pay to have a table. You have to pay to have a place, to get the permit. You have to, it will be something consistent every Saturday and every Sunday. A section, there will be like a food truck, whatever other people, artists, whatever. And there is the other thing that is, for example, the farmer's market, which is seasonal. But food trucks are great. I'm, I'm sure that we're going to be using a lot of resources from the city to cover the expenses to host such an event. Please.
An example would be like Heard on Heard in Edmund. Once a month, they have the food trucks and music.
Oh, really? I haven't been there in Edmund for like three years. But I do remember we had some type of food truck competition here in Oklahoma City. I drove all the way to the downtown and I was tracking those food trucks. And the line, that was years ago, seven years ago maybe, eight years ago. And the line of those food trucks were crazy. If we can have a permanent place that the city will rent out to those food trucks, that would be great. There will be a lot of potential, it's like several of them, why not? If, if I had the money and I have the land and permit, I would do it as a business for myself. I don't have the energy for that. But I, I'm sure that there is a way that we can basically capitalize on something, right? Like, like that.
If it was the city's goal to take, you know, maybe some of the green space at the old city hall building or something like that, to build a permanent structure that could host things like that, I think that would... There's a good argument that that would be economic development.
The old city hall? That's kind of all the way down.
Well, I'm just thinking, or any, any, any place that the city owns where you could build something like, also in Edmund, they have their farmer's market there just west of downtown. They built just basically a canopy on an old parking lot. And they've been hosting it there for probably a decade.
Heard on Heard, yeah.
I would, I would encourage you though, you probably get away with trying to host something on a semi-permanent or temporary basis, but I would encourage you to try to do something a little bit more permanent. Especially since, you know, once the revenues in your economic development... Especially since, uh, you know, once the revenues in your economic development fund is gone, unless you structure it as some kind of a loan, you're gonna get money back, that money's gone.
Here is why I'm thinking about that, because, uh. There is several buildings, um, around Fiftieth and MacArthur that she was talking about the other day, and we talked about it before. And one of them have this huge parking lot. And there is only two buildings and nothing. It's like a whole nothing there. If we can, as a city, help establish this type of festival. Convince the owner of this business that we're gonna basically do the parking lot, pave it and take care of it, clean it up. And get those trucks, food trucks, and put them there on weekly basis. Or if we can do it more, we'll do it more if it is working. And have those businesses surrounding, because one of them is a company and the other one is, um. Zumba and hairdresser, I think, and there is the travel, travel by taste too.
They're leased out.
Yes. Uh, travel by taste.
It's more past, in the damn graphics.
Yes, the graphic taste.
The parking lot, Luigi's is there.
And we can basically convince the owner of the building to.
We've tried, talked.
Who's the owner?
William Choi. There, there's, there's one thing to keep in mind, which is. Think about your sales tax rate. We've got a four cent sales tax, one cent of which is legally restricted, a half cent of it is what funds your capital improvement, uh, budget, your CIP. The other half is for public safety, police fire, so you've got three cents on the dollar that is unrestricted general fund money. You know, Jeff mentioned, I think you said a million dollar threshold for the, uh, sales tax incentive. Basic math, if you're gonna generate a million dollars of sales tax revenue, generating revenue, that's thirty grand per year to the city. So thinking about an event, if an event was going to produce a hundred thousand dollars in gross sales, that's three thousand dollars of general fund revenue coming in. Which depending on what the city's costs were, may not even cover the cost of doing it. And that, that's where some of these. I'll be the first one to tell you that you don't always do things just to make money. You do things because you're a city and you provide services to, to your residents. But if the goal is to try and generate, cause we, and Jeff, you probably know from discussions with the mayor and with staff, we're in a bit of a budget issue crunch right now. If, if the goal is to generate more revenue, every million dollars of, of sales that you can help incentivize to bring here still only brings you thirty thousand a year. Two million in sales brings you sixty grand. And, and so I mean, it, sometimes if you're, if we're talking about trying to fix the budget hole, it's gonna take massive. Increases in sales to fix the budget hole. Doesn't mean that you don't look at different scales. I just wanted to make sure and throw that out there that, you know. There's a cost benefit, uh, to, to everything and whether or not.
That's depressing, but I'm gonna go with something else. I want to bring people to War Acres.
Which is a perfect, I mean, you could, you know, it's like businesses have their lost leaders. We bring, we get you in with this thing that we don't make money on because then you will spend money elsewhere. You know, that was some of the discussions that we've had over the years when we talked, I remember when, uh, before Dove, it was the, uh, technical school that was going in. You know, part of the discussion that came up at council was, well, at least something's gonna be in there and maybe if bodies are there, they will stop to shop, they will stop to eat. Now, that wasn't an economic development, that was a zoning issue, but, uh, you know, there, there is benefit to bringing people here because of people come here. They need to get gas, they need to get groceries, they wanna pick up food. And that can, it's not just what they do on a particular location, it's the fact that they're here.
That's, that's, yeah, that's one thing. The other thing, uh, I'm, I'm thinking of is. As a citizen, a lot of things I'm not aware of. I don't know how the sales tax is helping the city. I have no idea. I just started learning about it, like what? Three months ago, four months ago, when I came to this place, uh, to, to the meeting here and attended a meeting. And it is, I'm sure there is a lot of people who have problem understanding the concept of buying local. They think it's, oh, mom and pop shop kind of thing. But why don't we basically put a list of which grocery store that is inside of, uh, War Acres? Which barber shop, which service that we will do and just add, attach it to the trash bill and send it out.
I've already brought that up. Put it on Facebook, put a list of our restaurants or, uh, we were told then Matt said that that would look like we were.
Well, th- that you can't pick winners and losers.
Yeah.
You know, you, you can't choose to benefit one restaurant over the other, but you can make it, you can absolutely advertise the restaurants.
Right.
A, a, and.
And, yeah, I brought that up before. Put it in the newsletter, put it on Facebook.
Not trying to put your thumb on the scale to push business to one business as opposed to the other. If you, and, and what we talked about was, you know. If, you brought up, you know, if they were gonna be having a sale or they're gonna be having some sort of a special event, well, as long as we have a criteria of it. If you're local and you meet this criteria, we'll, you know, we'll, we'll blast it out there, we'll, we'll put it on our social media. But we're not gonna pick winners and losers, we're just gonna establish the neutral criteria.
No, no, we, we will put every, like, we will do a category of, of, uh, today is, um, um, grocery stores. We'll get all our grocery stores in one list and send it out. The next time it will be something else. All of those are businesses that are in War Acres where if you spend your money there, you are helping your city, improving your city.
I went and got a list of, of all the businesses in War Acres and the file is, it's hard to read, so I took all the businesses, I put it in an Excel file. Then I separated it by restaurants, by hair shops, by this and that and whatever, and you can sort it by address, you can sort it by type of business. And I made that file. I haven't given it to anyone yet, but I thought that would be a great idea to put on Facebook or in the newsletter.
I think newsletter, people will read it.
I, no, they don't.
Well.
We get calls all the time.
If, if you want them to, if you want them to read it, put it on the newsletter that has the big trash day dates. Because I always dig for that.
Yeah, people do ask about that.
Yes, I think this is, this is a good idea. Just, just explain why you need them to shop locally.
Well, that's, that's a problem Oklahoma has in general, cause everybody thinks that we get property tax, cause every other state in the country does, we're the only one that doesn't. So it's a full education problem.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that?
Said Oklahoma's the only state in the entire country that we get zero dollars from.
Municipalities.
From municipalities.
Every other place in the country, about a third of their municipal revenues come from property taxes. Oklahoma's the one exception out there, and it's not because it's unconstitutional, it's because of a legislative bargain from decades and decades and decades ago where municipalities gave up property tax.
I'm surprised. We need to get that fixed.
The, the prob, you run into problems there because there are caps on how much property taxes can be assessed and the. It's already spoken forenote now, so anything that we take would have to take from someone else. I mean, that's where the TIF, you know, using the TIF as an example. The reason that it's palatable to those districts that actually get property taxes is, one, they don't have to do anything, but two, they're gonna get their revenue. It's just, we had some sort of investment that caused the property values to go up, which means that property tax on that increased value goes up. And it's us getting a piece of that increase, not of all the property taxes, but the amount that increased. So if you had a property that was worth, you know, the Golden Corral properties. Right now assessed at just over two point four million. If we, if it was in a TIF district and if we did something that caused it to go up to three million. Then it would be the property taxes that are levied on that six hundred thousand dollar increase that we would get a share of. If it was within a TIF district and if it was part of some sort of project that we did. But otherwise, we, it's sales tax and use tax. That's what we live off of, and charges for services. That's why we had the difficult decisions, uh, you all had the difficult decisions to make, raise your utility rates, both in twenty-three and then, uh, this year in twenty-four. Is because the harsh reality was you were running your utilities at a loss, so your tax revenue was subsidizing what is really a commercial activity, uh, an enterprise activity. So you're trying to get back to break even there, so you could at least then start to adjust the pro, other problems on, on spending. Because it's easier to address spending than revenue, because you don't have control for the large, large part of a revenue.
Well, and Matt, let me ask you, and Jeff, you may have this answer too. So whenever it comes to our TIFs that we established with having those negotiations, that was with Pat, am I right?
God, I'd have to go back and look at timing.
But.
Cause, cause I remember our initial meeting with Jeff's firm was Pat, Jim was vice mayor.
Jim, Jim, Jim was mayor when.
We were at the bells, shopping local.
Right. Okay, well, so the reason why I ask that question is because I've heard a lot of things from different mayors, and then, so our TIF, we actually get a hundred percent of the actual difference, correct? Like it does.
Of the increment.
Of the increment, so other cities.
I think it's, did, did we get the full increment?
I think we got the full amount.
Yeah, it's full, it's a hundred percent.
Yeah, Jim, so other cities have to negotiate with their school district, with their vote tech, with their county, and usually it's just a piece. So War Acres did a really great job, um, you know, Jim and, and, you know, I know, uh, Nip was a part of that too. We did really good. We have a really good benefit and we need to utilize it. So, um, getting kind of back on track with the conversation. What ideas do you guys have or thoughts that you guys have come up with since our council meeting about what you would like to see happen with this, so that whenever people come? What are some thoughts and ideas that we can say, hey, yes, we wanna do this and there's our established base?
I thought we were here to talk more about Gold, about the Golden Corral building.
Well, that's part of, that's part of the reason why I asked, uh, that question, you know, come with Jim. So what ideas do you have? If that's okay, right?
Yeah, I mean, we're still, we're talking about one example. It, the, the agenda is worded to give you a broad ability to talk about your overall approach in general. That doesn't mean you can't talk about specific ideas to how it might fit into your policy, because that's gonna be, that's one that is, you know.
Does anyone know how much it would cost them to do all their permits? Maybe we could waive the fees or give them half.
Most honestly, the permit fees aren't that bad. It's gonna be their engineering review.
That's a pretty negative cost.
Doing engineering work to the building, well, I mean, they're already getting, their price on that building's already almost four hundred thousand dollars lower than what it was originally listed at, so they got some light room there.
Well, I mean, what the pitch was, what I remember the pitch was, was essentially that there's a gap between what they believe the building is worth and what the owner believes it's worth.
Yeah, it's still, it still has a significant gap in it, but it is less than it was.
And so I'm guessing on their end, they're trying to figure out how to make the numbers work, that if they purchased it, that what the guy wants to sell it for. What do they have to generate every year? What kind of cost would they have to cut in order to hit their projections?
Well, that's just to purchase it, then you've gotta rehab it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's.
It needs a lot.
Which is all, which is all part of their calculation.
Yeah, well, and you all, and you all got what their calculation was in your packet. Um, it was around.
Six point nine originally.
Yeah.
Six point nine million.
So that's around what the overall rehab was plus the purchase of the property. So, so whenever I spoke to them, they're still, they're, so before they lowered it, like what Scott was saying, they were, that was over half a million dollars over where they needed to be. So it is reduced a little bit, but it still has a gap. So that's the reason why I wanted to discuss, you know, if we're talking specifically on that, you know, Judy, you have some things I know you wanna say. You know, doing a, an incentive of all three to where we do have some capital, because in kind doesn't necessarily do a whole lot. But also later on, money does help in the long-term trajectory. So I think a combination of all three would probably be helpful, but Myers.
Go ahead.
No, I.
Any thoughts you had, ideas?
I'm sorry?
Any, any thoughts, ideas?
I, I'm just concerned about this particular location in the fact that. And I made up a sheet that in the half mile section of Northwest Expressway from MacArthur to Northwest Seventy Second. You already have three pizza establishments and three chicken establishments in less than a half a mile. Um, and to Jeff's point earlier, you can get into a cannibalization of surrounding, uh, businesses, and that is a big concern. And I don't know, I wasn't here, I don't know if we offered these people anything to come in and, and establish their business. And I once heard a, a dispensary person come and wanted to come to Northwest Expressway in MacArthur. And I believe it was the planning commission asked him, why do you wanna come to this area? Because it's a flooded market. And they said, well, we know there's business there. Well, there is business there and. You know, if this was a Chinese restaurant or something, or, or some, something other than chicken and pizza were saturated. And that's my biggest fear is to give them money and they hurt the businesses that are producing tax revenue for us for a gamble on them.
What year did Incredible Pizza Company leave the first time where Gaddy Town went in and occupied the space? Because those were two separate companies. Remember that? I mean, at one point it started as Incredible Pizza, then it went to Gaddy Town.
I looked it up.
Was it, was it nineteen when Gaddy Town left? Was it somewhere in there?
Can't remember.
It's, it's been back and forth, I have.
Yeah, so, I mean, what, what, what did we give to Gaddy Town? Did they make out of here like Bandits?
I, I will, I'm glad you asked that, cause I wanted to answer a question that Judy asked, that they'll also answer yours. To my knowledge, none of these businesses received anything but part of that, and, and this is the point that I wanted to make in response to your question is, I'm not aware that any of them asked. So I do have to at least give it to the people that were here, uh, at the council meeting. They came and asked. When, when Slim Chickens and, and Zaxby's were looking at locating here, there, there was contact, but it was all about, you know, building code, zoning, making sure zoning was right. They're one of the two, there was a, you know, we had to really dig in on the, uh, materials they were gonna be using on the exterior of their structure because of, uh, code changes that had been made. But to my knowledge, not a one of them came and said, hey, we, you know, they, they figured out how to make it work and it made sense for them without having to come and look for any incentives from us.
Yeah, and Jay, and, you know, Jeff and I have had two or three conversations with corporate or with the franchisee. And they came and, uh, Mike Turman and I went out there, met with the realer, cause they asked, hey, you know, if we're coming out here, is there anything we need to know? And I made sure to go out there and Mike went out there to go know. And they were able, Mike was able to answer a lot of questions for them. You know, cause our job is to be a partner in the community with businesses. We did the same thing for natural grocers. You know, we dealt with a pretty big issue that they needed, but I wasn't gonna allow my staff to do anything until after they had a signed lease. And then we made the repairs that they asked for. You know, our job, you know, just like the Plaza and Paseo and all that stuff. You know, the city has done a lot to develop those areas. And then the business owners took care of, you know, storefront, you know, into their, into their areas. But they came and asked, you know, it's like Matt, you know, saying, and these are, these are just tools that we have, you know? Um, I totally get where, you know, Judy, where you're coming from with, you know, cannibalization. I know for myself, they spend millions upon millions of dollars for research and development and to figure out all that stuff. And this council has not the experience to tell them otherwise.
I have no objection to them coming in.
Yeah.
They can come in, they can spend their money, they can put their, their store in. I just don't feel that we need to subsidize them to great extent, because they're just gonna saturate the market for what's already there.
Especially there is a huge hotel next to them, like I don't know how many rooms that hotel have.
You know, they'll have to do that building, Roger. I mean, if you, if you pull up their website, which I've looked at, I mean, everybody can pull up Pizza Rite, it's online. They have two hundred and ten locations in fourteen states. If you look at the outside of their buildings, they're going to have to do leasehold improvements on that building. And it's probably gonna run them somewhere between, I don't know, at least five hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, on the high end it can run over a million. To make it look like all their other stores in terms of the corporate look that they wanna do. So, I mean, there, there's a lot of things here, and then, and then they're gonna have to pay architect and engineering fees anywhere between forty-six to seventy thousand dollars just to have that done. So, but I, 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 I'm actually in somewhat agreement with Judy here. I mean, the, the saturation of the market with similar product is, is not a drawing point. It's just like when I was, when I sold cars a long time ago at Mercedes Benz downtown, there were no other car dealerships down there. If you want, if you went to Mercedes Benz down there, you were there to buy a Mercedes Benz. It wasn't just show and tell time, kids. Now you go over to, go over to the auto mall up in Edmund, well, guess what? I've got Chevy, I've got Honda, I got Toyota, you got everything there. And then it does become show and tell time, and it's a very homogeneous product. This is a very homogeneous product to what we currently have. It's more homogeneous to Incredible Pizza Company than it is anything else. And Incredible Pizza Company has a go-kart track, a miniature golf course in there, I think they got mini bowling or something like that too, so that's pretty cool. We don't know that these people have that, but that's not the reason why people go to Incredible Pizza Company. They go to Incredible Pizza Company because it's a large accommodating space. We have a building that is empty on Northwest Expressway that's what, thirty-five hundred square feet? Is that what this is?
Fifteen thousand.
Sorry, fifteen thousand, my bad, I'm, let's get my numbers confused. But, I mean, the homogenization does not bring a unique draw to War Acres. That's my thing.
We, I mean, Northwest Expressway is one of our biggest corridors to get business in and to just saturate it with more pizza and chicken. Like I said, they can come in, that's great, but I don't think that we need to subsidize them to great extent. Like I said, they can come in, that's great, but I don't think that we need to subsidize them to great extent. Or similar product.
To answer Scott's question, Gaddy's left in two thousand and eleven and Incredible Pizza came in five years later, so the building sat for five years.
It started as Incredible Pizza and then Gaddy Town.
Yeah, and then, yeah, but that's when they.
And they left in twenty-eleven?
They left in twenty-one, according to this story.
How does Walmart own that building?
No, it was a ground lease.
A ground.
They abandoned it. It's set empty for five years, I mean, this last time.
Yeah, Life Church, Life Church was there for a long time and then.
But Life Church leases it from Incredible Pizza, and so does any other tenant in that building.
Gotcha, okay.
They set lease.
And this building has been sitting empty for three years, right?
Four.
Four.
Since twenty-twenty, they were closed.
And it is in bad shape.
It's in terrible.
Is there, is there.
The surrounding property.
Way to condemn the building?
It's not that.
How far away is it from condemnation?
It's, it's pretty far. I mean, you know, that property where Josephine's is, it was vacant for thirty years and it, I mean, it shouldn't be.
It didn't have a roof.
And it, yeah, and then they put a roof on it and then, you know, Mozen decided to go ahead and buy it and redo it.
It's just like the problem we were presented with the Hearst Building. Hon- honestly, Big Fox Retail's dead.
Yeah.
And if it's not dead, it's, it's hanging on death's door. And so we had to do something there, because quite honestly, the cost of demolishing that building could be more expensive than the cost of going in and gunning it for making a new mini mall.
Yeah.
I mean.
It would have been substantial.
It makes sense to do that at that point, but this, I, I, I'm not fully aware, certain what the possible answer is. That's a really interesting space, and like, like it's been mentioned, the areas around that space are dilapidated.
But the traffic along that corridor is still astronomical.
Why do you think car dealerships build on major arteries? Because they know by the hourly traffic count that they can project a certain dollar figure of sales for their location on an annual monthly basis, that's why they do it. Those guys out in small-town America, they make nothing compared to any of these guys who are on the big arteries.
I was going to talk about the saturation factor and the auto, still, I guess should say.
Similarity.
The ones on Thirty-Ninth Expressway, it's used car dealers, I mean, talk about saturation, but don't they seem to be doing well? I mean, there's only one or two that turn over every.
But there's only one franchise store there now, and that's Oklahoma City Volkswagen. The Mitsubishi store was shut down.
What I was going to say about the chicken and pizza stuff is that families know, oh, let's go Northwest Expressway and we'll find something. So maybe they think that's a good thing, because there's a lot of other businesses similarly.
I got a, I got a shirt, Debbie, that says worship the rap, rap from Chuck E. Cheese, and they're just right down the street from you.
That's Oklahoma City.
But it's still, it's still close enough that it's a competitor to them.
Well, I think, I think really a real competitor is probably really going to be David Buster's, because of the, the high, the high quality and high value of what Pizza Ranch is versus other things. You know, it just, it's a, it's a more upscale place, because, I mean, Incredible Pizza's a great business that does a good, that does good business. Um, and the, the numbers that Judy did on this, one point five with the arcade for Pizza Ranch, that's about two million short.
I just pulled it off the internet.
Yeah.
I pulled it off, asked what the average unit volume was for Pizza Ranch franchise, and that's what the internet gave me, so. I'm not saying my numbers are right.
No.
Saying it's a good, a good scientific wild ass guess.
Average, average revenue for these places is about one point five eight mil.
Yeah.
Average unit volume, but, I mean, when you say, Roger, when you say David Buster's, man, David Buster's offers ribeye steaks. I've read the menu for Pizza Ranch, they, they have no real massive diversification of their menu like David Buster's does.
Well, I mean, I, you know, the reason why I say that is because the quality of place versus, you know, it's just more upscale than it is.
Have you been to one?
I have, in Iowa.
It's where they're founded, right?
It's where they're founded, yeah, it's where they're actually from.
Is it a buffet like Incredible Pizza, or is it order?
Is it geared towards kids or is it?
It's geared towards kids, and they also have meeting rooms and they have, you know, to bring people in, and they, they're geared to bring groups in. I've been to Incredible Pizza twice and I will not go in there again unless somebody's paying my way. And that's nothing against them, it's just loud.
It's very, very loud.
It's a kid's casino.
Yeah.
I think he revenue off the arcade games.
Well, I don't know.
Incredible.
I highly doubt it, well, I don't know.
I mean, it's, I, I, I think.
Well.
But it's probably like the idea of bars that get pool tables.
That's a good question.
Sales tax.
But I think it's more like bars that get pool tables than the.
But everything's done on a card now, so, I mean, that's another thing that's really different now.
For, for those games, yes, that's true, everything's made on a card.
Yeah.
You go, you go to the counter, they preload a card for you and you take it over there.
Or a tiosk or whatever, yeah.
I have never been.
Yeah, but it's.
So you guys, you, you guys have one thing that prompted this conversation, but you've got the larger issue, which is.
What do we want to do?
You've got a lot of properties that I think everybody in the room would agree are underdeveloped, underutilized. This is just one example out of many that are out there, and the only reason it prompted this discussion is because somebody asked.
Right.
What are you open to? Not, not just the Golden Corral property, but, you know, if somebody were coming in, looking at buying Mr. Choi's property, but needed some help bridging the gap and, and had certain assurances that they would, you know, operate it for tax generating activities. What would you be open to? And, and that's my way of trying to steer it back to where, where we were.
Well, I think.
It's the problem because of the nature of this building, what, what fits the building, and unfortunately, as much as I do hate to admit it, these guys' style fits the building, I just don't like the business, that's all. I'm not saying that it's bad food, Roger's been there, I'm just saying.
But, but I'm saying at a broader level, you know, forget about this one.
Did the feast have anything to do with Golden Corral shutting down because the feast is so close?
No.
I have my opinions about Golden Corral, if I may speak on that.
Well, yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Their customer service was terrible. I was in there once with actual employees having food fights in my pathway.
Nice.
I even mentioned it to the manager, they were sorry, blah, blah, blah. Anyway, that's one example.
How was, how was the Taco Fondue family?
Well, the, the actual reason why that shut down was because it was owned by corporate and corporate shut all of their stores down, they never reopened after twenty-twenty. Franchisees are the ones that own the ones that are open.
Yeah, Doyle and I go to the one on the south side all the time, and it's great.
Look how long, look how long it's taken Cajun King to put back in a buffet since COVID. If you walk in the door now, they finally have the true buffet, they didn't have it for a while.
Have they passed all their inspections and stuff? That's.
The Golden Corral on the south side is owned, is owned by a person.
Yeah, yeah, the franchisee.
His name's Jason Dibbels.
Well, so, so with, like what Matt was wanting to do, you know, the whole reason why we're here is to have the conversation of what are you guys open to with coming? So one of the reasons too why this, the reason why I think that it's important to do something with this is because we've had multiple people ask about it. And one of the things that they wanted to do was tear it down and put in another automatic car wash. Well, we have, we have, well, they weren't allowed to, because we put, we paid a million dollars under, under price, you know, or, you know, gave away a million dollars.
We sold, we sold at a loss.
Sold it for, sold it for a million dollar loss, so we could say no. Um, another thing was a gym membership, you know, place, another gym that they wanted to do. So again, but those are viable businesses that we can't say no to, if the number's worth it, we would have bought it.
But for Aida's purposes, since she's new to the council, this building in particular that we're talking about has a clause on it that it has to be, whatever goes in has to be revenue-producing for the city. So, i.e. a car wash.
Where the Golden Corral was and the hotel was one lot that the city bought, split into two and sold at a million dollar loss. But put a restriction on the deeds, that basically said they had to be used for either a hotel or sales tax generating activity. So it's not because of zoning, it's not because of any ordinance, it's because we attached a covenant to those properties when we sold them that ensured that they could only be used for these purposes. If we didn't have that, it'd be a car wash right now.
That doesn't give us very many options for other businesses then. I mean, so what if it's Pizza Ranch and there's the one across the street? I mean, at least it's something.
It's anything sales tax. My issue is, I don't mind subsidizing to a small extent anybody that's coming in and fixing a blighted area.
Amen.
Just to clean it up. But it's got to be a marginal, it's got to be a very small amount, I'm not looking to pay their rehab costs.
Yes.
So that's my criteria, if they're fixing something that's terrible and it's, and it's deteriorating quickly and it's affecting the surrounding properties. That gets it a little higher on my priority list. But I like the idea of the TIF. If this was in the TIF, I'd have a completely different look at it, because if they did the improvements and they made the improvements for the TIF. All of a sudden, giving them a little bit of compensation for that, I'd be for.
Can you repeat the requirements to get that area to be a TIF, you or?
Well, I guess, if I can just tag on to that real quick, though, real quick, is that, you know, this, a, a sales tax reimbursement agreement would operate very similarly. Just with a source of revenue that you already have available to you instead of one that you don't. In any, any economic development agreement we would have that would give, whether it's Pizza Ranch or any other retailer or restaurant that would go in there, there would be, you know, certain criteria that have to be, have to be met. Either before, well, both before they start receiving any kind of reimbursement, and they'd have to maintain those standards to continue receiving it. So it's not, I mean, it's, and you would be reimbursing them likely, and we laid out, because a, a good chunk of the cost and one of the reasons why. Yes, the main reason that they haven't pursued or they're asking for funds is because the owner is wanting to sell it for too much money. But if the rehab costs weren't going to be as high as they were, they might be able to stomach that and still make, you know, their investors happy on making a decent return. That's really what it all boils down to is, you know, do the finances work enough for them? You know, or anybody frankly, to redo this site in a way that they can actually get funding to do. And that's why it's called assistance and development financing, because the reason they have these kinds of gaps is because the market otherwise wouldn't provide for it. Anyway, going back to your question, a TIF district. So the city council would have to consider a resolution that declares an intent to either amend your existing project plan and to create a new one. And then we'd have to come up with that amendment, so basically adding in a fifth TIF district or amending the boundaries of TIF D to include this site. Uh, the review committee would convene, which would be chaired by the mayor most likely, and someone from planning commission would be on it. Three members of the public at large, the mayor would present a list of seven people to the other taxing jurisdictions and they would approve, basically. And then, so all the taxing jurisdiction members of the review committee and the at-large people would review the draft amendment or the new project plan. Make a determination that it's eligible under the state TIF law, which means that it either needs to be in an enterprise area or it needs to be a reinvestment area, which is probably easy to qualify for a reinvestment area. And then they would make a determination of what the financial impact would be. So as part of that analysis, you know, we can either try to do an in-house analysis, a lower degree of detail, or possibly hire an economics firm to study what the cannibalization would be. And they would include that in their recommendation and their findings about what the financial impact would be moving forward. And then, so they would either recommend approval or disapproval and tell you why is what they think the financial impacts are going to be, both in terms of general economics. And how it would impact all the taxing jurisdictions, including the city, but all the other taxing jurisdictions, too. And the planning commission would review it, make a determination whether it fits in with the city's comprehensive plan.
Two public hearings.
And then there'd be two public hearings in front of the city council before you can adopt them. So we'd probably look at it like a two or three month process.
How much?
Two to three months.
Two to three months?
Three months.
Two to three months, what's the cost? Because we're paying people to do all this work.
For an amendment, probably, and just time, I'd, probably between. Overall, including engineers and stuff like that, probably about ten grand.
Well, I was guessing ten, fifteen grand.
Question, can we pay their fees out of ED fund?
Like for the, I was about like the.
Like the analysts and the, the.
Engineering and all that stuff?
Oh, pay, pay the cost of pursuing, changing the TIF district out of the ED.
Yeah.
Trying to think of why you couldn't.
I don't, I don't think, I don't know why you wouldn't be able to, but on a similar note, you could also probably use that phone, those funds to hire an economist to make, do, do economic, economic impact analyses as projects come up. To help determine whether or not it would be a good investment for the city. Or potentially hire an economics firm to study the city as a whole and all of your business environment, and then recommend specific industries that would do well here and not take away from your tax base.
That's a good idea.
I have a question. Your numbers on here, the twelve percent for the percentage of, uh, construction costs, are those just estimates or are those what we've done in the past?
Uh, those are designed as caps just based on the amount, or at least for the, uh, well, are you looking at the retail or the?
I'm looking at the development project assistance.
Yeah, that's, so that's based on how much life is left in the TIF, so TIFs can only last twenty-five years. So as the time goes on, the later it gets, the less increment collections will be available for new projects.
Right.
So that's why that decreases over time.
The first twelve, first four years?
Twelve percent is about what we see clients typically do kind of across the state, that it's something that's relatively comfortable, assuming that, you know, the construction costs form the initial basis of the, the reevaluation once the project is completed. Over a term of twenty-five years and gives you enough comfort to know that like the TIF will likely generate that much revenue over time.
I was wondering if it was possible to do a combination, development project assistance and retail recruitment assistance as well, and do a combination and lower.
You could.
The amounts.
You could.
Okay.
With the tax incentivization process, can we set benchmarks?
Yes.
And, like, specific benchmarks, like you do this to your building, well, bada, whatever the, the agreement is. You can put like hardcore benchmarks in there?
Yes, you can put any kind of performance requirements, you know, you think are reasonable that the other side would agree to. I mean, it's, it's a contract.
Okay.
So.
Like Joseph.
It's a negotiable, you would negotiate it, okay.
Yeah, Josephine's was, once they got their exterior landscaping done, then they got their first half.
Something that's really easy to enforce in that regard is a lot of times we require, you know, a lot of our clients will require proof that they've invested a certain amount of funds into their project. And so they would provide, you know, financial information that they could verify before a certain brand, you know, a certain tranche of assistance is provided or before payments even start.
I mean, like, we could set it up for the fact that they have to rehab this building and make those tax incentivizations to assist with the covering, recovering the cost of rehabilitating the building.
Yes, and it would be specifically laid out that way in the assistance, like, this assistance, though, is being paid out over time, is intended to partially reimburse some of your rehab costs. And we can include, uh, as part of their development obligations, because you're not giving somebody money for nothing, you're requiring them to do things in return for their funds. And part of that will be, you know, they'll submit their development plans, they'll submit their budgets, they'll submit, you know, quarterly or monthly reports on their construction activities. They'll report when they make employee hires and what those salaries are, things of that nature. And so you'll have things that you can keep track of based on their submissions, and if they don't submit, that's a condition to receive of their assistance that they haven't met, so they don't get their assistance.
Thank you.
So we, we can do a tax incentive without it being a TIF, correct?
If it's sales tax only.
Yeah, okay.
Or if you're using money out of your economic development plan.
Jeff, just as a, because I have no idea what the answer is, thinking about that empty field behind the hotel, where the valuation on it right now is pretty minimal. And then, you know, obviously, TIF gets activated, there's some sort of development there, now you've got real value that's being taxed. As opposed to a building like one that's already built, that isn't going to be demoed with some brand-new big building built on top of it, it's going to be a rehab. Is, is that the kind of development that you're looking for with TIFs? Where, where you're talking about improving an existing building but not building anything new?
It can be, but the new investment needs to, you'll need to do an analysis of how much the value is going to improve. So I don't, I haven't looked at the specific, you know, assessor account for, you know, the Golden Corral building, for example, but. If the building has dilapidated so much to where the county assessor has dramatically reduced the valuation, because the improvements have just depreciated that much.
The, let's see here, I've got it pulled up here. For twenty twenty-four, the market value was just shy of two point five. And it looks like they've locked in the market value at two point four eight eight. I have to go to the next page.
The assessor's plan, I'm going to drop down the value.
Yeah, twenty nineteen was locked.
Can we have them come reassess?
Twenty nineteen to twenty twenty is the last time they increased the market value.
Twenty twenty? Is that what you said?
That's when it went up to two point four eight eight.
They need to come and reassess.
Well, and what I'm saying is.
I mean, because I think it's less.
If that, if that, if that was just a vacant lot right now, and it was within a TIF, then obviously, if they built something, the value of that lot goes up substantially. Which means the taxes go up substantially, which means we get that incre, that increase over what, what it was before. Right now, it's already being taxed. I mean, the tax right now is thirty-one grand that they're paying on property taxes.
Maybe that's why the seller doesn't want to go down lower.
Even though it's worth less, because it actually has no value.
And so the purpose behind my question was very much a, okay, if, if this, if this building becomes a four-million-dollar building. The first basically two point five was already locked in.
Right.
We, we don't see that increase, it would just be the increased value and the ta, property taxes associated with that increased value. As opposed to, and that's why I brought the lot, there's that big vacant area behind it, is that's ripe for, it's, with my understanding of TIFs, that's ripe for a TIF, because. Once you activate it, if something big gets built there, essentially all the property, I mean, not technically all, because it's being taxed right now. if something big gets built there, essentially all the property ta- I mean, not technically all, because it's being taxed right now, just.
But it's included in a TIF, we just have to activate it.
But, but, and the point I was trying to make is, new development as opposed to, you know, it, they're not proposing to come in and knock this building down and build something brand new there. It's gonna be worth a whole lot more, I mean, they're gonna be rehabbing existing building. So, it's gonna go up in value, but it's not gonna be, it's not gonna go up like it did when Golden Corral built the building.
In the first place, yeah.
But we have no investment in it, in the TIF side of it, that's what I like about it.
But, but we were talking, but we were talking about.
I, I think what Matt's getting at is that there would be less money available through TIF than otherwise would be, because it, there's an existing building there that has value, that I'm sure the county assessor isn't looking at the condition of the building because they just don't.
Yeah, no, they don't do that. Like, whenever the Chalk Todd did a TIF for Walmart and they gave up twenty-five years of all tax revenue to bring them in.
Jesus.
But, it fully developed around there, which is the whole purpose and reason behind it, and now they're very happy because it's now expired. Um, Mike, you wanted to say something?
That's okay.
Yeah.
Oh, and they're two years behind on their taxes.
You guys still have the timer, the little egg timer?
You're fine.
Okay, so I'll make it really quick. Um, when I was vice mayor, we had, uh, Henson's Burger come in, Roger was out of town. We have nothing as a city to give to businesses to say, this is what we offer businesses. We can't even give them locations. I had met with Crystal and she said, these are the meters that I have that are off, that used to be businesses. You're gonna have to go check, they might be a business, they might not, they might be a building, they might not be a building. The Economic Development Authority should be doing these things. What workers been doing for the past twenty years, I'm gonna pay somebody. They're outside, they don't do anything, and we pay them and then they go away. This authority needs to make the criteria, like, if a business wants to come in and they wanna break, come, you know, the Economic Authority meeting is like, okay, approve expenditures, adjourn, we're done. There's no economic development in that meeting at all, it's just what expenditures did we do? You guys should be deciding by case by case, because you can't put in a brochure, this is what we're gonna give for discounts and everything else. You need to say, come to the workers council meeting, get on the agenda for the economic development, they can present their case. Somebody you might give something, somebody else you might not, depending on where they're at. But, Henson's came, they were gonna be ready to come in, they even met the city inspector. He was gonna build, it's a year later, nothing. Because we don't give them places, we don't have any kind of economic plan as a city. That's what you guys need to decide, and hopefully, if I get elected back on, that's what I'll help you decide, but that's what we need to be doing, and that would affect even this pizza barn. They'd have to come meet in front of this group and not just the developer, whoever the owner is, and say, this is what I want, this is what I'm requesting, and then you can decide case by case. Because I agree, like with Judy, when, like Pizza Hut went in there, they didn't get any incentive, so why should Pizza Barn get something? It, it depends on what you're offering, so, just take that into consideration, I'm trying to get her out so she can go home. She don't wanna stay here all night, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
I, I can tell, and I agree with that, I think they oughta come up here personally and make a presentation on what they're wanting, personally. As opposed to having a Realtor come in.
Intermediaries.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, any other business, we, the owners do come in, so, gonna be prospective owners are gonna come in, make the presentation. We're, we're, we're guessing on a lot of numbers.
Yeah.
And what they're, they're all saying, but not the person who's gonna be doing the job.
Yeah, no worries.
One, one of the reasons we set up the process is so that, I mean, they would eventually come to you, but they would have a vetted application with financials that have been looked at by staff and your professional consultants, not just me, also your planner and things like that, who can look and verify the numbers and things like that, make sure everything actually makes sense and is realistic, so that by the time they come up and make a presentation, staff is comfortable that what's been worked out is workable, and then it's still gonna be your call as policymakers to decide whether you think it's worth or not, but.
A screening.
Yeah, so basically, you're talking about, you know, because that's, that's kinda how it comes down to, because I totally agree, you know, whenever that time would come, they would absolutely come and be here. And this is just part of the conversation, because this is the way the process works, that everything would be submitted via application, you guys have vetted, staff have vetted, and then depending on what recommendation would come, well, are we going to? Are we heavily considering it? Great, fly down and come and see us, but if not, why would, you know, we come? Am I wrong in that assessment?
I mean, that's, that's, that's the reason that we set up the process the way we did, you know, six years ago. Uh, I mean, you all as, you know, the policymakers, you guys can revise that policy however you see fit. Um, but I do think, you know, it'd be worth, it is almost always worth having, you know, incentive requests be vetted by someone before it comes to you all, because otherwise, you guys will get some harebrained schemes that'll waste your time, waste your staff's time, et cetera.
All, all the Realtor wanted was just permits, is that correct?
That's all they asked for.
That was one of the things that she's asked about, because she's used to dealing all over the country. So.
And she's local Oklahoma City.
She is, yeah. She's, uh, actually a practicing attorney here, a real estate attorney here, yeah. Yeah, it's about, so.
What, go ahead, Judy.
No, go ahead.
Why don't we say, here's a, uh, let's, we've got eighty-one thousand dollars roughly, whatever the number is sitting there that we've gained from the investments. Give them a half a percent incentive on sales tax for the first three to five years. If that's not good enough, then.
Well, I'm, I'm all for that, as long as it's viable and it works out. Uh, three to three and a half, really.
So, I.
Heard that before.
I mean, I, I have, I have yet to see, you know, as part of the application, you know, they're required to submit a variety of things, obviously all their contact information for who, who their developer is, so we can vet them specifically, you know, if they have an attorney or an accountant and things like that. But then also, you know, they're supposed to require, like, submitted a, a market study that shows how financially feasible it is, so you know, like, how, how do they know it's gonna work? Right, you don't want to have someone come in and say, oh yeah, this'll work. And then halfway through your incentive period or after the incentive period is over with, they leave, because then you don't get that back in benefit that you bargained for, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Then also, you know, a detailed project performer that shows their cash flow and projected sales and, you know, debt service ratios, all that kinda stuff, all those kinds of things that you can look at. Um, whether you have special training or not, someone on staff does, or someone in our office does, can look at and say, you know, their numbers make sense, they're reasonable, they do have a legitimate gap in financing, things of that nature. And that's all the kinds of things that we would, I would recommend be vetted before it comes to you all.
To know what, so, we can be told whatever, but it's fully vetted to know exactly where they are.
Yeah, because I don't wanna become somebody's bank. If they can't get investments, I sure don't wanna be part of their investment.
It's not, it's not them, it's not Pizza Ranch L P, it's the franchising. Right, they're moving into the state of Oklahoma.
Are they franchised?
Yeah, so they have Montana, Wyoming, North Dakota, South Dakota, Nebraska, Kansas, and they're moving into Oklahoma.
Missouri and Branson, because that's the closest one to us.
No, they don't own that one.
So, I, I mean, it's, as, uh, either as the E D A trustees or as a city council, uh, you know, you guys get a policy on the front end in terms of like, what kinds of businesses do you wanna see promoted? And we take that into consideration in our analysis, and then you'll have a second policy input for like specific agreements and whether you think it either meets the policy, or if it doesn't, there's other ancillary benefits that you think outweigh how it doesn't. But in between there is where, you know, that's why you have staff, right? That's why you hire outside consultants, like our firm or like, uh, Mark and all those guys who work for the planning office, you know, they, they look at this stuff and they can, you can help you guys make an informed decision.
As a, as a curiosity, so, one thing I thought about is, instead of saying, hey, we're doing a half a percent, kinda like what we did with Morello's, is it possible to say, hey, we'll do a quarter of a percent and then, no matter what, you'll get your half a million over, doesn't matter how long it takes? Is it possible to do that?
I mean, I, I, a, a lot of things are possible, I mean, that's definitely, that's a legal possibility. I mean, it's still gonna be based on, hopefully, an analysis of, like, what they actually need to actually make the project happen and whether you all think it's a viable and worthwhile project to help. I mean, that's really what it boils down to. And to do that, that's why we try to set up the applications, so they can provide us as much information upfront to help that, that, help, help you guys have a properly vetted project to make that determination.
So, I guess the next question is, do you all feel comfortable with having them do so? If it's submit the full application and having staff and Mr. Saban vet it?
I like it, except I hope they pay for the fees and extra work that's above the budget out of the E D A fund. Can that happen?
Well, I mean.
Otherwise, I'm thinking that's an extra expense that we.
You could, I mean, you could reimburse the city's, you know, permit fees and things like that through the Economic Development Fund as part of the incentive.
Uh, I think what she's talking about is more.
The analysts, the attorneys.
S R B's time.
Mm-hmm.
For reviewing the application before it gets to the E D A.
That.
To reimburse them with it?
Or somehow, because it's.
Have it billed through E D A.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because we're tied on our budget. And if we have E D A funds and it's gonna end up economically developing more acres, then.
Gotcha, so like the ten thou- like the ten thousand dollars be paid by, by E D A instead of our own staff out of our own.
Something like that.
I like it, yeah.
The question is, do we think some kind of compensation is available for this particular restaurant or not? Because that's what you wanna be able to tell them, yes, there could be some financial incentives available. I don't know what they are, you have to do the application and get vetted and then we can find out. But right now, yes or no, are we willing to give them anything? That's the question.
And to what deg- but not, we won't be answering the question then, to what degree?
How much, right.
That's part of the vetting, but are you willing to give them anything?
Well, like, as a curiosity, if they were a hundred thousand dollars short, is that something that this board's willing to do? You know, whether if it's through.
If they come back and say we're one, if they come back to Roger and say we're one point seven short, and it wipes out the E D A.
We know what that's gonna mean, no!
Yeah, we cannot put all our chickens in one basket.
No, I know, well, you know, it's just a question of.
No pun intended.
Doing, doing like, a, a combination of all three, I think would be really appropriate because it also does help us to be able to tell the story, hey, we're also able to help this so future ran, you know, future councils and, you know, this board twenty years from now can say, hey, we did this in the past and we're able to be creative and figure out something. So, but, um, cool, anything else?
Well, I think as far as number two that you had on here, to discuss what establishing incentive packages for recruitment to the city, I think that needs to go out into some breakout sessions, do some brainstorming, and come up with ideas that we can then present, not we, I don't know if it's me, but, uh, present to, these are some ideas we have, what do you all think? Because we could be here all night throwing ideas around.
Right.
But I think we need to go into some kind of a brainstorming session where you just start throwing stuff up on a board and see what sticks, I don't know. What are you laughing at?
Me.
I may as everyone's.
Well, one, I mean, something that could happen is that one person from each ward, you guys set up a time to meet and talk and y'all do exactly that.
Um, one potential solution, and I think it also be used, I have, well, a couple of things, based on just what I've heard, things that you might consider as well, is that, uh, in addition, you ha- hire me as a consultant, you guys hire Mark to do your planning, you guys hire consultants to do a lot of things that you don't need a full-time staff person to do. Uh, you could hire a planning firm to do an economic development plan. And they can throw these ideas, broad-scale plans, not just things that might be available for this one particular project out there. And then you guys have an idea of like, you know, if it's this kinda project, this kinda thing makes sense. You know, kind of like our incentive policy, but a little on steroids and based on a lot more, you know, active community input, where you do go into breakout sessions with people who are trained to throw things on a wall and lead discussion and come to some kind of a viable consensus, both among policymakers and maybe even invite some of the public. Um, might be worth considering as well in the future. Um, and also, in terms of like just promoting local business, um, some of our clients that aren't that much bigger than you all, uh, have their own chambers of commerce. Um, some of them share offices at City Hall in some of these places and are partially funded through the city or things like that. I don't know if that would be an eligible expense of the Economic Development Funds, but, um, something like that, that'll, you know, some, uh, it'd be an entity that can help lead events if you wanted to like pursue some kind of an event thing and just foster a lot more camaraderie and, and, and cooperation between your business community.
Yeah.
Uh, I know you guys are probably active in like the Northwest Chamber, but they don't necessarily care where the city lines are with all the cities in their jurisdiction, but something more acre specific could definitely highlight more acre businesses that way.
Cool.
Anyway.
What's our next move?
That's a great question. With this company, we need to tell them to go ahead and submit a full package if they would like to have something done. So, they've submitted a partial, they've filled out the application. I think it'd be appropriate to have them do so.
Yeah, once they decide what they need to do, then we need to decide how much we can give them or what we can give them.
Well, and some of what they may be asking for, isn't you giving anything that you have today, it, it'd be asking you to give back some of what they would be giving you.
Well, yeah.
You know, they're doing three mil- they're doing three million a year in re- in.
Yeah.
Sales of tax generating sales, that's ninety grand of, of new revenue to the general fund. I think, Jim, you brought up half cent, and that'd be fifteen grand. That, you'd essentially get ninety grand and you'd send fifteen back, which means you'd get net seventy-five grand of new money that, that is not being generated today.
And if, if you follow your existing policy, uh, the procedures in the policy. So, when that incentive review committee meets.
And that's part of it.
Um, you know, you guys can, you might not be able to participate if you're not an actually representative, but that'll be open to the public. Um, I try not to have it in here because it's too formal of a si- of a situation, but if we can have like a conference room or on a table or something like that, that promotes more of a discussion-type environment. Um, you guys would be more than welcome to sit in on those meetings too, so you're at least aware of the discussions when it finally gets to you guys.
All right, so I'll ask, uh, I'll ask them to submit a full, uh, application and then go through that process and ask Pam how that can be done with, if you guys are comfortable with that, instead of becoming a general fund, that the cost for the city planner, for Mr. Saban, that those expenses come, that we have to incur, come out of E D A versus general fund. Sound good?
Yes, related to this project, yes. Thank you.
That, I'll take a motion.
Motion to adjourn, seconded?
Thank you all for taking the time. Yeah.
It's the only reason why you got the one piece.
Morris?
Yay.
Yeah, I don't hate it.
Myers? Lost a week?
Yay.
Fritz?
Hey, yay.
Douglas?
Yay.
Gunther?
Yes.
Myers?
Yay.
Trevi?
Yay.
Kevin?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yay.